Council meeting to order. Would everyone be standing? Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it.
Madam Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Carey.
Present.
Chilton.
Present.
Lisa Parker.
Present.
Hutchings.
Present.
Ruffridge.
Here.
And Ms. Pamela Parker has a request for excused absence on the agenda. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda and consent agenda. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
I would make a motion. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion, but isn't it supposed to be? Oh, yes. I make a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda.
All right. Now, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffridge. Are there any changes to the agenda or consent agenda? Would the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Approval of the May 12th, 2021 city council meeting minutes. New business ordinances. Ordinance 2021-11, repealing the disaster emergency declared for the city of Soldatna in response to the COVID-19 pandemic introduced by the mayor, public hearing on June 9th, 2021. Ordinance 2021-12, conditionally waiving certain provisions of SMC 13.16, water and sewer user charges as it relates to penalties and shut offs for water and sewer accounts that are past due at the expiration of the city COVID-19 emergency disaster declaration introduced by the city manager, public hearing on June 9th, 2021. Ordinance 2021-13, adopting the biennial operating budget and establishing appropriations for fiscal year 2022 and 2023, introduced by the city manager, public hearing on June 9th, 2021. New business resolutions. Resolutions 2021-24, approving amendments to the Soldatna Community Memorial Park fee schedule for memorial wall plaques, introduced by the city clerk. Resolution 2021-25, approving an amendment to the Soldatna Police Department records retention schedule, introduced by the city clerk. Resolution 2021-26, authorizing agreement with Peninsula Paving LLC for asphalt and concrete repairs at Lever's Lane in the amount of $22,850, introduced by the city manager. Resolution 2021-27, adopting the allocation of funds for investment purposes amongst the short-term account, medium-term account, and long-term account, and setting asset classes, class allocations for the long-term account, as well as providing for appropriate performance benchmarks for all of the accounts, introduced by the city manager. And action memorandum 2021-6, a request for an excused absence from the May 26th, 2021 regular city council meeting for Councilmember Pamela Parker, and that is your consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? Uh, for those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Do we have anybody raising their hands?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Hearing no one wishing to speak, the approval of the agenda and consent agenda is back before the council. Are there any council objections to approving the agenda and consent agenda? Seeing, hearing none, the agenda and consent agenda are approved. The next item on the agenda is presentation with prior notice. Peninsula Spay and Neuter Fund Mini Grant Report. Judy Fandre, founder and vice president of the Peninsula Spay and Neuter Fund. And you're up. Just, just please state your name and address for the record there.
Yeah. Okay. My name is Judy Fandre, and I live at Wildberries, Clarksville, Kinnai, also off in St. K. Thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to be here, and thank you for the $1,000 mini grant that you gave to the Peninsula Spay and Neuter Fund. And as an our board, our goal is to do this among the homeless abandoned, and especially immediately for my animals on the peninsula. So why did I, I'm gonna go kind of personal. I kind of report, kind of general idea of why we, why we're here, and maybe my personal story. Why did I start this? Uh, I've been working at one of our local vet clinics for many, many years, and in 2010 I decided I was gonna go volunteer the community animals shelter and help animals that don't have such a good home and the loving people that bring those animals to the clinic. And it got really, really hard volunteering there because I couldn't leave the faces of the animals I was caring for there, and every time I went, it got harder and harder. And I was thinking, I don't know that I can keep doing this because it just hurt too much. So I was considering giving that up, but that wouldn't solve the problem, and I knew that I'll still be there, so I had to do something. But I, the next, there's two situations there that really pushed me towards starting the fun. One was when a dog came in. He was about a year old. He had been adopted at the shelter as a puppy, coming in now as a year old lab dog retriever, wonderful, happy, exuberant dog, not so he didn't take care of anymore, and suddenly didn't have time. And at that time, back in 2010, animals didn't have to be spayed or neutered before they were adopted out, instead they would pay the adoption fee, receive a voucher, bring it home to our local clinic for six, uh, for six months, they had to stay here and neuter their animals. And when that dog came in, it kind of got me thinking that, gosh, it was adopted out and I was here back, and it's not spayed or neutered, harder, harder to adopt a dog. And kind of looked into that and was surprised to find a lot, it wasn't, more people did redeem their vouchers, but there were a lot of people that didn't, even though they paid ahead of time to get it done. So now that animal's out there, not spayed or neutered, either reproducing and the motor service is on review, and then they come to the shelter, they're not so successful, and the cycle just kept going. The next situation was a cat that came in just being nasiated, thin as a rail. Overnight, she actually had a litter of kittens that were paid with dead, and none of them made it. And that just really hit me. So I took her home, I got her fed and healthy, got her spayed, or got her, yeah, got her spayed, brought her back to the shelter, and then she got adopted. But I think those are the little things that said, okay, you can't do this, but you can do this. So I set about, um, thinking my goal would be to do one a month. It was just me, and I thought, I can somehow raise money to do one a month. And I heard about Jane Stein, a producer in the research with a couple people that wanted to do this thing going. So I called her up, and Jane does come on, and we sat down, and it was been an hour or two, I think we were at the bank, and we set up the account, put my hundred dollars in the bank, paid her the $25 MNC, and I had a nonprofit. Now I set about a new program. I kind of had in my ideas, I was thinking about the three years of what I wanted to do, but I set about contacting some of the programs in the state, finding out how they did it, why they did what they did. Um, so it was just me, what can I do, what do you think is good, bad, what should I try? They sent me everything they do, they talked to me on the phone, just give me anything I could to help get this policy grown. And then I contacted all the clinics and the shelters, and I said, this is what I'm trying to do, and I want your feedback. I got this draft plan, and my folder, I don't follow it, I wanted to run, and please give me, I want this to work for all of us, because I needed the clinics on board and the shelters on board, so that we could all start this project together. Everybody gave me such great feedback. So now the program is formed. Uh, February 2012, we issued our first coupon to help get a dog spayed. How the program works is I developed, there's a coupon program where there's an application, anybody that looking for assistance goes out, who they offer their pet is, and right on the application, it says, why we're here, helping reach that population, and offer financial assistance to anybody that can't quite afford. And it stays on there, that when funds are available, where they come from. So when I get a request, either by phone or email or application, I call them up, and we have a good discussion, talk exactly what I just said to you, everything, I, I want to really get the order out, and let people know that there is a problem, and how I know what's a problem, and, and how we can all fix this, you know? It's, if the program's there, and people don't call it, or people don't fill me to it, it doesn't work. So, once we go over the program, and, and I need it to be on our system, that if you need assistance, that's why we're there, I don't have the resources, the time to, to make sure that you're, you're the person that needs help. And sometimes, what I think is the level, and they think is different, I maybe just look at things like this, kind of put some, like, if your dog's spayed that may not have. So, once we go over that, I issue them a coupon that's good for 30 days, and it's whatever theory they drew that they want on it. When they receive the coupon in the mail, they make an appointment at one of our local clinics, and they're all on the coupon, and they bring it with them to the clinic. Uh, if the clinic, if it, if this complex, about 40% of the cost of spaying and neutering, they pay the balance, and then I reverse the clinics. My whole philosophy of doing it that way is I want to develop a relationship with the clinics, with them, with that guy, and your animal, whatever gets hurt, and they're seeing me, and I want them to be responsible and work with me to, um, know the problems out there, spending, and saving lives, or part of this. There's a lot of people that say, I just can't go to the shelters because I want to take them home and call home. And I wanted to do that too, but my aim is full, I'm married, you know, I have my husband, and my goods, and my jewelry, and we have so many. So I tell everybody, this is the way you can, since you can't take them home, this is the way you can affect their lives during the, I'm getting like, we going there? Well, in the beginning, my goal was one a month, right? And we have money somehow to do one a month. And, um, to date, we've done over 3,400, so we're about 25 to 30 a month. And I just decided I'm gonna do it this way. So it started out with me, one a month, and now, this is what it's become. I decided I'm gonna do this, because these women have come on and found me, and they need those two from the very beginnings, almost 10 years ago now, that they really, I mean, we were, and we used to, ladies, like, from the beginning, a couple years. So they've enabled us to go from one a month to 25 to 30 a month. The commute, we're mostly funded, uh, funded, and when I started this, I was worried that these shuns, names were, it's a fact, and I was, it won my name out there, but that's what, the only reason we've been able to go forth to do this, really, come out of this, is rally the families that follow up on this thing. It's incredible. And the people that call me, I get grandmothers calling for granddaughters, granddads calling for grandmothers, the neighbors calling for neighbors, and, and moms calling for daughters, and others calling for mothers, and people that, gee, I just love my pet, I'm proud of her, and, but I know this is really, I want to go, it's really amazing, and I'm so proud of her. And I get the other phone for hours sometimes, but they're good conversations, and, and sometimes people don't agree with me, but it's sweet, because we listen to each other, and I think, oh, you know, it keeps on in my head, and maybe I get them thinking about something. So, that's kind of how we all work, and because of these community ladies, we are now, too much to go, our own independent title, we're 23, we're more than I ever imagined. It was scary for me, because I was young mom, but, um, it's just been, it's just so wonderful, and the grand, especially this is, is just, they do, we need the help, we do, we help the land, so not in our business, but in ours, and they're very appreciative of me. One last thing, we're having a fundraising council. 235 West Cap, by, uh, June 4th and 5th, all the clinics have been done, and they're locally ready, and we've done it for like, the last seven, eight years, and people come looking for our clinics, you know? And if you have any questions, please, go on.
There any questions from the council? Mr. Carey.
You are the reason that I love living in Soldatna. This has been my home since I was a third grader, and so I have no intention ever of leaving. But I, when I think of why it is that this is the most outstanding place in the world, listening to you here tonight was wonderful. And it's much more than that, and the work you're doing is so valuable. And I just, uh, just real pleased, I want to thank all of you for what you're doing. And you make, again, you make our community even better. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Thank you for your presentation, and I would echo the comments coming from Councilmember Carey. Can you give me the address on Catmai again?
235 West Catmai.
And is, are there hours on?
Friday and Saturday.
Okay.
She's, she's, yeah, well, I don't know, but, um, she was one of my first board members, a friend I work with her, so she's the kind of a board member, just she kind of likes to stay in the background, but she turns her house into a green, growing, it's like Trinity Green House on the corner of the hill. We all started, it all started out, I used to do the Wednesdays and Saturdays market, and she'd come, I'd sell things that were locally crafted, and we'd, and we'd sell them, and raise funds. So one day she thought, um, forget me now, so that she, she had been growing that were leftover, my gosh, we put them on the ground, and it's old. So we thought, yeah, we'll do it here. And neither of us were really gardeners, but we, we were going a little more, bringing them to the Wednesday Saturday market, and then we'd carry them all morning, and we'd go to a plant sale at our house, and, my gosh, now her little garage is a green house for the summer, so the plant sale, so is mine, my garage sale, my garage is now green, growing plants.
Ask, how much does it cost now for spaying, spading and neutering?
I'm not gonna say in a month, and I'll tell you why. This is what I tell people when they call me. It can vary by clinic, it can vary based on the size of your animal, the, your animal, the health of your animal, and if I put a price number, or if I put a cost up there, that's what people call and expect, when they call the clinics. So this is what I say. You're at the clinic numbers, I can give them, call, they'll give you an estimate, you tell them how old your animal is, um, how, what kind it is, or how much it weighs, and they'll give you an estimate. Here is what I can offer you on a value of a coupon, and then they'll know if you can afford it, or what you need, and then call me back. So that's what I do, because I, I, I don't, I, I just find it, it can stop people, and it can vary, and it can vary, like I tell people, just because this clinic, oh, charges more, this one costs, charges less, it's just that they offer, require different things. I know them all, I know them all so well, that I, they're all microphones, and I don't take my animals to any of them. I do work at one, I don't tell anybody what it is, because I'm duty, and I'm not at work, and I'm employed when I'm at work, but I, I go to any of them, call, I'll find out which one feels comfortable with you, which one you can afford the best, and, and just, just know that, not, one's not trying to cheat you, and one's not as good because they don't charge as much, it's just that they, certain, that one requires certain things, they, and, and, and so, what I can tell you is, um, for my voucher program, a dog's spay, the coupon value is $110 off, and for a dog neuter, a cat's spay is $100 off, and for a cat neuter is $60 off, and that's about 40% of the cost of a spayed and neutered. And that's what I can tell people, so when they call, they can, okay, you're charging, and this is what you can put, yes, and that's what I can provide.
Thank you. In my case, I've never adopted a cat, they've adopted me. Actually, the cat didn't, yeah, and actually, the cat belonged to the neighbors and moved in with us instead, but still there, too.
A lot of people come up and get sticker shops, and I understand that, because I work at a clinic, but I'm also a pet owner, and I'm very thirsty, so I get stickers, oh, my gosh.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation, and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is public comments and presentations. Items other than those appearing on the agenda, and it's three minutes per speaker. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Seeing no one here in the council chambers, do we have any raised hands?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on to item six on the agenda, Assembly and Legislative Report. Are there any representatives from the borough or the state in attendance who would like to speak? And for those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. See no one here in the council chambers, do we have anyone on Zoom?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Moving on to item seven, Public Hearings. Ordinance 2021-010, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $43,125 in the general fund for fees associated with the collection of remote seller sales tax by the Alaska Remote Seller Sales Tax Commission on behalf of the city of Soldatna, introduced by the city manager, may I have a motion to enact? Thank you. Mr. Ruffridge?
I would move that we enact an ordinance 2021-010.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilton. Uh, report from the administration, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we briefly discussed this during the budget work session, but, uh, this refers to the fees that are collected, um, by the, uh, Remote Sales Tax Commission on internet sales. Previously, we had been reporting the net revenue that comes to the city after those fees are removed, and we learned more recently, uh, that according to best accounting principles, we need to report the gross amount of revenue as well as an expense for those fees. So this ordinance would amend our budget documents so that we are appropriately reporting the fees. It does not, uh, impact the finances of the city, it's just, uh, updating our budget to reflect that best reporting practice. Thank you.
The public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Seeing no one here in the council chambers, do we have any raised hands?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Having, uh, no one else wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Seeing none, we will, uh, call for the vote.
Councilmember Chilton?
Yes.
Lisa Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Thank you. The, uh, ordinance 2021-010 passes on a five to zero vote. Uh, moving on to the next item on the agenda, number eight, new business. Uh, all the new business was covered, oops, covered under, uh, uh, A of, uh, new business was covered under the consent agenda, so we'll move on to eight B, resolutions, and that's resolution 2021-023, setting the rate of levy for, for property taxes for the city of Soldatna at a half a mil for the 2022 fiscal year, introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to adopt? Vice Mayor Parker?
So moved to adopt resolution 2021-023.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, per the Alaska statutes and our own municipal code, the council sets the mil rate levy on property tax annually, uh, prior to June 15th. Uh, we're recommending no change to the city's current mil rate of 0.5 mils, and that's the, um, projection that we built into the draft budget that we presented recently to the council. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Uh, seeing no one in the council chambers, are there any Zoom hands?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Having no one else, uh, having no one who wishes to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And all the numbers that I'll use are from the, uh, the city's biennial operating budget as, uh, as the draft that's been presented to us. This past year has placed many, if not all residents of Soldatna at a significant financial disadvantage. We've had many bright spots, which have remedied the economic disaster of COVID-19. The largest bright spot has been that the federal government has opened our collective pocketbooks and sent out billions of dollars to keep our country going. The residents of Soldatna have benefited greatly by the many pockets of federal funds. The state of Alaska government has been a speedy conduit of federal funds, and has particularly assisted in rent and mortgage payments for harmed individuals. We have received so far 10 million 178,841 in all areas of assistance in the budget. Leadership and staff of the city of Soldatna have done an excellent job in handling the health concerns and the financial concerns of our residents, and also those that depend on Soldatna for their economic activities. We have helped almost everyone we could think of. The program to assist local community activity with the voucher program was especially helpful, and has been copied by others. The city of Soldatna is one of the most financially healthy local governments in the state of Alaska. In discussing how to invest the many, many millions of dollars we, the city council and staff, manage because of prudent, conservative past leaders, I asked our broker if Soldatna was the most financially secure city in the state among cities of our size. It was an unfair question, but then, he lives on the profits he makes off the money of the city of Soldatna residents. He could not answer because it would speak to other local governments that were and are not as secure, and it wouldn't be fair to him. The city of Soldatna maintains a property tax based on the demographics of the city 50 years ago. Property tax does not contribute significantly anymore. Most property in Soldatna does not pay property tax. Property tax makes people not want to live in the city, and is a factor against annexation. Our local businesses could lower costs if they did not have to pay property tax. I've then listed the, uh, the last three property tax revenue, 312,000 in 19, in fiscal year 20, 312,000 in fiscal year 21, 288,000 in fiscal year 22, 322,000 is a projection, and for fiscal year 23, 322,000. Our fiscal 2022 budget has 10 million 474,475 in revenue, an increase of 2.627 million dollars, or 33.48%. Our revenue is going to be up. Property tax of 30, of 322,000 is only not quite 3% of the operating revenue. If indeed, it is felt that we must keep property tax, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to add in the discussion that I'd like to see a moratorium. I'd like to see us maybe do a two-year moratorium, so we keep this line item. I've been told by a number of people they're concerned, if the line item goes away, and we'll need property tax in the future, it'll be too hard to do it, because we'll have to put in a new line item. If that is the only reason for keeping property tax, then let's do a two-year moratorium and keep the line item in place. This is our first two-year budget, and it'd be really nice if our first two-year budget, uh, got rid of those property taxes. I believe that if we let city residents spend their property tax money, they'll do it in local businesses, where the city will collect additional sales tax. Promotion of local businesses should be a higher priority than what I consider to be unneeded property taxes. I'm hoping next month that the council and the mayor will approve a city resolution praising the people running and working in our local businesses. It would be really nice, assuming that we approve that, if we have a timely example from the city council and mayor to assist our local businesses by financially letting them know that, uh, there would be no property taxes on the businesses. Spruce bark beetle meda, mitigation, mitigation, thank you. Spruce bark mitigation fire break. If we do keep that money, it would seem to me I'd like to see it then go for spruce bark mitigation. And budget stuff in the last year or so. I've heard all these people talk about, um, as they, they look forward in terms of theirs existential concerns they have. I'm somewhat a philosopher, but I can't relate, but if I was going to find an existential concern for the city of Soldatna, it would be fire. When my family arrived during 61, when you left Cooper Landing and you came down the hill, it was desolate, in all directions, all you could see were dead trees, and went on for a year, for miles after miles after miles, and we knew it was the Great Kenai Burn. As mayor of this city, we had a pretty significant burn that came toward us, and as mayor of the borough, again, the same thing. I would like to see us take on as, and we have, in my opinion, the best planner that the state's seen in our manager. I know the work she did as our planner, I know her education. I would hope that rather than property tax, we could look instead at planning how to build a fire break for our city. And I see our danger isn't simply from testimony of fire coming up. Look in our city, there are many lots that if they caught, and it was windy, there is dead spruce bark beetle all over, so it wouldn't have to be a huge fire from outside. And so, if we do keep the money, boy, I'd like to see it spent as we And so if we do keep the money, boy, I'd like to see it spent as we begin a ten-year plan to do a real mitigation of the fire danger we have in the city from that. And so I just, I hope that we will do away with property tax. I'm hoping our planning will do much more in terms of mitigation of a fire break, working with the federal, state, chambers of commerce and non-residents. And I appreciate very much anyone who was willing to listen to me on this item. Thank you.
Do you have a motion in there?
There's a motion before us. To me, it would be to defeat it. But if someone thinks moratorium would be better, then if they made the motion to do a moratorium, I would support that.
So are you making a motion to do a moratorium?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to amend the motion before us that the city of Soldatna do a two-year moratorium on the city property tax and that that moratorium would place us at zero mil rate for property tax.
Did you catch that, Madam Clerk?
If I've said it wrong, help me, please.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. The state law requires we do a resolution setting the mil rate annually, so I don't know that we could do that if Manager Queen could speak to that.
It's not an idea that's been presented to us, and I'd want to check with our attorney. I had not heard of moratorium used in connection with property tax mil rates, so that's not something I'd be comfortable advising the council on tonight without having discussed it with our attorney. But Clerk Sanner is correct in that the council sets the mil rate annually. So our intention, even in providing a two-year biennial budget, would still be to come forward and annually revisit the issue of the mil rate. We'd need to get further legal advice prior to advising you on that motion in particular.
Let me ask this question before we proceed. If the motion was made to change the whereas to a tax rate of zero mils, the same with section one, would that suffice instead of using the term moratorium?
Through the mayor, it is acceptable for the council to set the mil rate at any rate you deem appropriate. So that would include a rate including zero. It could be amended in the resolution as you just described.
Would you like to do that instead, Mr. Carey?
I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and also to our manager for the assistance in arriving at posing this question. So yes, sir. My amendment would be to modify the resolution before us, and so that would be setting a mil rate of zero, and all places where it needs to be stated, it would be changed.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffridge. The motion's before you, so let's have a discussion. Ms. Hutchings?
Well, I would only like to say one thing. I have property outside the city and property inside the city, and I pay more, a higher mil rate outside the city because of the service areas that we absorb within our mil rate.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Through the mayor to the city manager or finance director, how many delinquent property tax owners are there in the city?
Thank you. Through the mayor, Ms. Parker, we don't have that information in front of us. The delinquency rate is very low. I think compliance with property tax payments is consistently high, and we had not seen a dramatic change this past year during COVID. We budgeted for a reduction anticipating that that might be an impact, and I think now we've realized that that didn't occur.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I am not in support of this proposed amendment. I, as a property taxpayer, can complain to the city. If I didn't sit on the city council, I can complain to the city because I pay property taxes and I pay for the services through the property taxes that I pay. Once you eliminate a tax, it is very difficult to put a tax back in place. We've kept our property taxes low, very low, and I haven't heard objections from property owners that the city property taxes are exorbitant and we need to make changes. So I am not going to be supportive of this amendment.
Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to say this is definitely something that has crossed my path in previous budget conversations. I think it comes from an idealistic place for myself, sort of thinking it's the role of government to tax when needed and then not tax when not needed. I think the issue of need is a tough question to answer in this particular case. It is a small figure and one that certainly could be done with or without, I think, to Councilmember Carey's point. I think some of the numbers in this document here, particularly the increase of large percentage in operating revenue, is maybe a little misleading. So I want to be clear that that's not something that I think pans out over all of our budget times. That's not a true increase, but speaks to the level of care's funding that we've distributed throughout our community in the past months and fiscal year that preceded this one. I think overall I'm in support of eliminating property tax based off of that ideological principle. But then again, I don't have as much experience in putting one back again if needed. So for that, I think I would understand what Councilmember Lisa Parker is describing as well. Undecided at this moment, but I think overall I'm in support of this concept.
Any other comments? Mr. Chilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure. I'm really supportive of this at this point in time either in bringing it down to zero. However, one alternative I'd maybe put out there, and I'm not sure it really gains us much benefit, but might be worth consideration, is if you look at the Central Peninsula Hospital service area, I think ways back, they were considering the same thing. And rather than eliminating or putting it down to a zero rate, they just put it as a placeholder amount of zero-one. Maybe that's something we could consider as a council, if we were to move forward with this, of course.
Ms. Hutchings?
On the Central Peninsula Hospital, point zero-one, it's because they have to pay for an audit, and that's the reason they did keep it in there, so that would take care of that. And to go back to my comment about the mil rate, we have property out at Sport Lake, which everybody thinks is Soldatna, or pretty close, and it isn't. And I pay point eight-six more in, at Sport Lake, which is just borough, because of those service areas that we have to pay for. And the same thing with North Kenai, because we have a piece of property that's so we pay for the fire department, the recreation department, and, you know, besides the borough taxes in there, at almost twelve mils now. And then if you look at Anchorage, Girdwood is at thirteen point eight-six, I believe, this year is what it came in at. So this point five-zero, to me, is a placeholder, and I think we just need to keep it. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Through the mayor, a question to the city manager. Should property taxes be taken down to zero mils? Where would you make budget adjustments? Or would we just take more money from our savings account to compensate for the loss of these revenues?
Thank you, Councilmember Parker, through the mayor. So the budget that we presented assumed no change in the mil rate. As Mr. Carey pointed out in his letter, approximately three hundred and twenty-two thousand. So if that were to be amended and the mil rate went to zero, there would be a couple different options. So the deficit shown in our budget would increase by that amount. So in the general fund, it would increase from approximately let me get to that page if you don't mind. One second. The deficit would increase on paper from four hundred and forty-five thousand to seven hundred and seventy-ish thousand. As we've communicated often in our budget discussions, we project conservatively, both on the expenditure and the revenue side. So in actuality, we would expect the city to be much more close to a balanced budget at the end of the year. However, these numbers don't yet incorporate any funding for capital projects. So considering the numbers in this budget book, Melanie pulled capital project expenditures over the last ten years, and in the general fund, the city has averaged 1.5 million approximately in capital investment every single year. And so that's just another thing I want to point out in that this revenue piece is very small compared to other revenue sources, but it's important in that we're essentially funding capital, funding operations at a sustainable level. We would not, at this point, prior to the budget hearing, anticipate making, finding three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars worth of cuts. That would be fairly significant amount of cuts. The impact of that, I think, would be a draw potentially of our investments, which then would cause us to revise our earnings estimates accordingly. Those are based on the expected return as well as the fund balance in those accounts. So we would expect a smaller amount of funding being available based on those earnings.
Thank you.
And if I might follow-up question through the mayor, to either the clerk or the city manager. For FY twenty-three, the council next year will have to again consider a resolution setting the mil rate, correct?
Through the mayor to Councilmember Parker, that's correct. So this resolution is specific just to the first year of the biennium, just to FY twenty-two, and a resolution will be brought before the council at the same time next year for FY twenty-three.
Closing comment, if I might.
Go ahead.
I again reiterate that once you eliminate a tax, whether it's a property tax, sales tax, it's tough to put them back in. The Anchorage Charter that was adopted almost fifty years ago requires sales tax to be voted on by the people. And repeatedly in Anchorage, they have not been able to have a sales tax, which is why their property taxes are exorbitant. I think we have something that is very, very reasonable in terms of a property tax, and it does give our property owners a vested interest in their city. Thank you.
Mr. Carey?
My point tonight was to begin a discussion, and I think that's what's happened. I haven't heard anything that went too far. I do think it's a real, it is a true number that I use, but it's a one-time number in terms of the increase. In discussion, it would seem to me on a tax, the top issue should be, is it something we need? As compared to, we've always done it, so we must keep it. I don't think taxes should be that way, and I'm sure that's really not what I heard. Also, the fact that people around us tax higher, have a higher mil rate, boy, that doesn't affect me at all that we should keep ours up there because they are more. But I think the discussion would include many things. And one of the issues I would hope as we go forward in a discussion, what percent of the land in the city are we even allowed to tax? We have a very large amount. We're a very small city in terms of square miles. A very large amount of it is not taxed at all because we have assigned that it doesn't have to for legitimate reasons in terms of ownership. And somewhere, and I'm sure someone that knows all kinds of stuff about the cities, they probably know almost exactly that, again, the feds have this, the state has this, 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 and what is left. And so that if the amount of money that this generated was absolutely needed, then if the pool of those who pay taxes, as we continue to watch things expand and kind of make people move out, then we'd have to increase the rate to provide that exact same number. But again, that's maybe, that's not really the point before us today. I appreciate very much the discussion. The idea that it needs to be for one year rather than two, wasn't aware that we have to do it every year. Can I ask, if we didn't have one at all, would we still have to pass a resolution saying we don't have one? A mil rate?
Yes, it is a state borough and law that we have to report to them by June 15th annually what our mil rate is. So we would still have to adopt a zero.
Okay. Government, it's so wonderful. Even when you do nothing, they still want you to pay some money to let them know that you're doing nothing. But that makes sense. I appreciate, again, I want to see very much the discussion and that everyone participated and I think shared where they're at. And I'll be interested how the vote turns out.
Any other comments? Ms. Hutchings?
I was wondering if, since it is point five mils on a hundred thousand dollars, what does that come to?
Thank you, Ms. Hutchings, through the mayor. So one-half of one mil is fifty dollars per hundred thousand of taxable value.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of comments myself. Gone, thought about this quite a bit. The largest benefit will be to the large property owners. For instance, the one that's going to get probably the largest deduction in taxes would be Fred Meyer's and then some of the other car dealerships, gas stations. I honestly don't believe that those businesses would probably lower their prices because they're saving some money on that property tax. And as Vice Mayor Parker has said, I feel the same way about once a tax goes away, it becomes difficult to put something back in. Right now, the state of Alaska is back again considering a three percent sales tax, which would have a great effect on our city. And at that point in time, we may need to rethink our entire revenue source if that actually happens. At the same time, keeping this mil rate at a half a mil, which for me would be about eighty dollars a year savings, at least with that in there and we had to rethink our revenue sources, we already have a mil rate in there. It won't be one giant leap at one time to increase it. We could gradually increase it. So I hope you defeat this motion and we continue on with a half a mil. So having no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Hutchings?
So are we voting on the amendment?
Yes. We're voting on the amendment. Okay. No. Ruffridge?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
No.
Parker?
No.
You have two yes votes and three no votes.
The motion to amend failed on a three-to-two vote. So moving back to the main motion, are there any further discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Lisa Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
No. Sorry, yes. Got to jump out there. Yes, yes.
No motion to amend.
Yes, the main.
Resolution 2021-023 passes on a five-zero vote. Okay, moving right along, we will be going to, so many green things on here, I'm not sure where. Back down to mayor's council and agenda item number nine, mayor and council reports. My comments tonight are Wednesday in the park is going right now. It's a beautiful day out there. If you get a chance after this to go on over there. I know when I drove by earlier today a couple of times, that parking lot was packed. It looked like there was a big crowd out there, people wandering around. I see that we're still going to have parking problems, so I think you were working on some kind of a resolution through the city manager. You were working on some kind of a resolution.
For parking problems, Mayor Whitney?
For additional parking.
Thank you. We are discussing with a landowner downtown, improving their property that will add some additional capacity in a more permanent way. Those discussions are Those discussions are ongoing in the design work, and hopefully we'll be able to come back later in the summer with, with that solution. Thank you.
Good, good. Coming up, well, earlier today, Dr. Zink was here. She did a walkthrough and a little bit of a talk there at the Walkin Clinic that is going on at the strip mall, mall there at the corner of the Y and the Spur, oh, can't even talk tonight, Sterling Highway and the Spur. And that's a good project going on. Friday, I will be doing a little presentation at a, I'm not sure what we call it. It's going to be for first responders and military service members at the front here, no, I think it's Frontier Physical Therapy on the Spur Highway. And then Memorial Day, we'll be doing a little bit of a presentation also at Memorial Day Services at Lee Hansen Park in Kenai. So moving on to council reports on boards and commissions, Saldana Chamber of Commerce Board meeting, Mr. Chilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fairly brief report tonight, so we met on May fourteenth. Just a couple items of note for the council. Cleanup Day was a success on May eighth. They are gearing up for their advertising campaign, which is well underway. I'm sure you guys have probably already heard the commercials on the radio, the one that just aired on TV. They're really hitting it hard. They got ads up in the airport and then also in the buses in Anchorage. The longstanding website rebuild project is nearing completion. I know I've been saying it for a long time, but it really sounds like they're almost there, thankfully. And then the last thing, which you are all well aware of, is Party in the Park tonight. I hope to see you all there after the meeting.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Chilson? Okay. Move on to item ten on the agenda, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have, the ice is out at the sports center, and our parks department has shifted to full summer mode along with our streets and maintenance department. So campgrounds are open, events are happening, the streets are swept, and the flowers are out, and the banners are up, and the traffic is back. So we're in summer mode, and the parking is back as an issue that's going to be on our priorities. We met employee-wide and had our first employee potluck of the year. We haven't done that in a really long time. We had great weather, we were outside in the backyard, felt really good to get everybody together again, welcome some of our new employees. Glad to be able to do that again. And then lastly, just a reminder, I'll be out tonight through Sunday, the sixth of June. I'll be traveling just with my family, and Kyle will be available as acting city manager in my absence. Also, Laura is a good point of contact for any council members wanting to follow up or get some additional information. She can coordinate with Kyle or Melanie or, or get you the information you need. So look forward to returning, and I will be at your next meeting, but I'll be out in between, and please reach out to the department heads with, with anything you need. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the city manager? I guess that must be why Kyle trimmed his beard. So we'll move on to item, agenda item eleven, public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. We see no one here in the council chambers. Do we have any hands raised?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number twelve, council comments, and we'll start with Ms. Hutchings.
Well, it's a sunny evening, so I think we all need to go. Great, short meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Chilson?
I'm ready to hit the park. That's all I got.
Vice Mayor Parker?
I won't see you at the park because I have to go pack since I'm going to be going out of town and going and spending some time in beautiful Sitka. So I was sorry that Pamela wasn't here tonight for her last meeting, so we could give her lots of kudos. So we'll do that some other time. That's all.
Mr. Carey?
Memorial Day to me is a, is real significant. I was four, my father was killed in the Navy, and just the idea of that impacts of the family and many others, and for all those who lose individuals in the service. In this last week and a half, we watched in terms of Israel and Gaza, again, what war is like in most of the world in terms of huge, huge harm and desolation afterwards and damage. Our country has been so fortunate that we have not had land wars, and I'm not forgetting Pearl Harbor or certainly Attu and Kiska. But I would say, in some ways, what does goes on in some of our cities, the violence that's there is similar in terms of last weekend, again, eleven hundred shootings across the country and, and just, and so Memorial Day, please be for peace, please be for people being reasonable, defend our flag, and please always stand up for anyone who serves or has served in our military. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carey. Mr. Ruffridge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No comments. See you in the park. If you want to say goodbye to Pam, I know where she's at, Lisa.
It's the park.
Thank you. Item thirteen is executive session. There is no need for one this evening. Item, agenda item fourteen, meeting announcements, June second, twenty-twenty-one, Planning and Zoning Commission, five-thirty, and June ninth, the city council meeting at six P.M. here in the council chambers. Having no other business in front of us, meeting's adjourned.